Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance took the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Alan, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any adjustments, however, I have put out your seat. I sent this out to you today by email, but everyone has said they didn't get it, so I did bring an extra copy. This is on classroom technology integrators, which I thought you might be interested in reading, but I do not have any changes to the agenda.
I'm wondering if the letter, the letter that we talked about sending to Commissioner Gendron at a minimum about the GPA and the statement on the laptop is warrants, if we need to put that on. I don't think that's officially on the agenda, so I would suggest that that's an adjustment. And I guess the letter would require a vote, so maybe we can make that 7G. Is that sound reasonable?
Sure. And I do have extra copies if anyone needs. I saw that look.
Okay, we have several minutes to approve.
Trish, can I ask, I was going to speak about, give an update on seat. Did you want me to do that under the committee reports?
Yeah, you can do that under committee. Yep, in support on right, exactly. Okay. The regular meeting on Tuesday, March 10th. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Linda. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. All those, any discussion? All those in favor? I think that's 7-0. Okay, the special meeting on Tuesday, March 24th. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Karen. Second?
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. Any comments or questions or discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. The third meeting that we need to approve is Monday, April 6th, special meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Comments by our student representatives? Do we have any here? Come on up, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi, I'm Leigh Foden. On, I'll update you on what's happening lately. On Friday, April 17th, there isn't any school. And there's a third annual middle school arts night on April 29th at 7:00 at the school. The jazz band will be performing, they'll be drumming, selling of local artists and student work throughout the school. So this week is World Language Week. There's a trivia question every day, and in the 5th grade, there's a guest speaker, Peter Filippa from Bulgaria. And in classes, there's listening to different music, and we're making a music tour poster from around the world, and we're saying the Pledge of Allegiance in different languages every morning. And tomorrow in the high school, there's a 5th and 6th grade band and chorus performance at the high school gym at 7:00. The fourth dance of the year for the 7th and 8th graders is on May 1st from 7:00 to 9:00. And the 6th grade goes to Chawanki, May 4th to May 8th. And that's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much. And I don't see any high school students, so. Comments from the public on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board on non-agenda items?
Hi.
Hi.
Would it be possible for me to address the board at the end of the meeting as opposed to the start of the meeting?
Does anyone have any? Nope, that would be fine. No objections, that's fine.
I'll be here. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, public, who wants to comment on a non-agenda item? And I would ask that, just remind them if they could be brief.
It always gets stuck in as I walk to the podium. A simple observation and a request. The town council last night, even though I didn't stay for the whole thing, apparently voted to toss back to you about a $140 some odd thousand problem. I have communicated to them my beliefs early this morning in a fairly strongly worded email and throughout the day. And my belief is that I do not think we should balance our budget on the backs of teachers and students. If we have a $145,000 hole, quite frankly, I think those who gain, which are the taxpayers, should pay. And those who suffer the pain, i.e., it should be those who gain who suffer the pain, the taxpayers. So whoever you wish to solve this problem, I am at least one taxpayer that's willing to pay what I get. And I believe that the vast majority of taxpayers would be willing to pay a 0.6% increase rather than having to come out of teachers. And I know a lot was said at that meeting about what teachers are made, make, a lot of it seemed quite high to me, but I do not know the numbers to know whether it really is. It's the first time I ever heard that teachers make an awful lot of money. And I, so, my basic point was to suggest to you, it's up to you how to handle it, but as a taxpayer, I'm willing to pay for it.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Recognition. Middle school drama club performance?
I think we may have a few of them here, if I'm not mistaken. Looks like it anyway. Steve, do you want to make some comments about it? I will just say it was an excellent performance, but you may want to talk about it for a few minutes for us?
Well, thank you very much. In all my years of involvement with the middle school and specifically with the middle school drama club, we've never been recognized formally anyway by the school board, so I wanted to really say thank you to you folks for putting us on the agenda. Evan, Mr. Solander and I had a wonderful experience this year. We had not been involved in drama for a couple of years, for me longer than he, and he's unfortunately involved in a semi-performance of his own tonight with his social studies groups at the middle school, couldn't be here. So I speak for him when I say it was a fantastic return to middle school drama. It is a really, truly uplifting experience. And this cast and these community members, their parents, come together in a way that I just don't think you can find in any other, maybe another, any other middle school in Maine, and certainly many other activity that we do as a middle school. It really brings together 5th through 8th graders and parents and teachers who, and staff who wouldn't ordinarily sort of get behind something like this. So thank you again for your recognition and this show, we all still wake up singing the song, so, thank you.
It was, I had the pleasure of attending and it was really terrific. And you're right, it's a toe, it was toe-tapping music and everyone did a great job.
It was my first middle school play and I was taken aback by the quality of the staging, the costumes, the singing, the music, the production as a whole. It was astounding. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
And I would like to, go ahead. I would like to congratulate you all, congratulate you also, both on the play, but another very important piece to this is to watch students who have come up from elementary school to middle school and the change in what they do, the maturity that they do with it, and I hope they are very proud of what they have done for the middle school in showing what you are capable of doing. I had many people who said, this could have been a high school play with the way you did it. So I really appreciate that, and I hope that the people who have worked with you in the past, from kindergarten on, all the way up through, have taken note of it and have taken note of what a great job you have done and how you've grown into this piece. So thank you very much for what you've done also.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, the AP government trip. Do we have any information on that, Jeff? Do you have anything you want to report, or? Do we want to explain that?
You want to let them go.
Oh. You, you, middle school students, actors and actresses are welcome to stay, but you may leave if you'd like.
I know a lot of high school people didn't come tonight because they had so much homework. I hope you're not in the same condition, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I don't have, yeah.
Just sort of really quickly, because I don't have anything prepared. I know that Ted Jordan and Ms. McNulty and her husband and some other chaperones went down and they took 30 students to Washington. I would say it was a very successful trip. It's always an extremely busy trip. The kids are busy from just about 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night with various activities, wanderings, and I know some of the highlights this year, we're talking to a couple of lobbyists, talking to some former Cape Elizabeth high school graduates who are now working on Capitol Hill. They had the rare privilege of actually going to the Senate at a time when all 100 members of the Senate were on the floor and actively working. I mean, that almost never happens, although C-SPAN makes it appear that there's more bodies than there really are sometimes. And the other one is, for the first time, they were able to go to the Supreme Court and actually sit down on an actual oral argument, which is very difficult to sort of be able to get to do. It was a great privilege and the kids enjoyed it. I heard nothing but really positive reports from students about the trip. And I know if Ted were here, he would, once again, as he always does, thank the board for your support.
Thank you, Jeff. The state jazz festival.
Hi, Jeff.
The kids did really good. I honestly, the, I think each one of the combos received recognition. I think our main jazz ensemble took 3rd place in the state ensemble. There were a number of students, Luke Carey and some others, who received outstanding musician awards, and Brandon Meeger. And I think it was Luke and Brandon who received the highest recognition for all of the musicians who were from the Cape program. But it's, we have an absolutely incredible thriving jazz program, and if anybody managed to get to see the Jazz Cabaret as well, a couple of weekends, just a couple of weekends ago, it's just a really, it's a real jewel at Cape Elizabeth High School.
Thank you, Jeff. I would echo your comments about the cabaret. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the cabaret was awesome. And what was really nice was Tom LaZotta's commitment to those kids is just, he just exudes it, and those kids love it. They had a great time. And the one thing that was really nice was got to see the old and the young and the middle-aged. But the room was, I mean, the kids sold drinks and desserts, and they had, they brought in some people from, I can't remember, one of the nursing homes. And then you had little kids running around and dancing and twirling, and it was just a really neat community project. So, you know, congratulations to Tom LaZotta and his group and the kids, because they did a wonderful job.
Okay, I think that's it. Communications. Thank you, Kathy. Retirement, Alan.
I do have one on this. This does say retirements, but unless I have a surprise, I did read Julie's a couple of months ago, there's only one this time. And this is from Ellen Brady. And Ellen writes, please accept my letter of intent to retire from my position as a district teacher of English language learners. After almost 20 years working in the Cape system and as a parent of three children who experienced the joy of the school system, it is very difficult to say goodbye. It has been an adventure, beginning as an ed tech at the high school, then as a special education teacher in the middle school, finally as an English second language teacher while supporting math with Ponco students. Flexibility and a sense of humor have helped, but truly, the wonderful students, staff and parents have facilitated my career path into a remarkable journey. Thank you for the opportunity to interact with so many unique personalities, each child so special, parents so nurturing, and the staff so supportive. And again, that is Ellen Brady.
Thank you, Alan. Budget up.
I think the most recent update I have is, obviously you were in a meeting last night, or many of you were, to hear the town council, listen to many members of the public. It was a broad spectrum of events because they were looking at both the town side and the school side. From the school side, there was a great deal of discussion. I would have to say there were people on different sides of the picture, that at the end, I didn't stay after the vote came, started, but I did get results from Mike. And what I understand is, at this point in time, there were six town councilors there, and I think I sent to you this morning, that two of them are supporting a 0.6% tax increase. A third one is supporting a 0.6 tax increase with the statement that they probably will not vote for that 0.6 when the vote comes, but they were supporting that. Two of them were supporting a 0% increase, and one tried for a compromise of a 0.3. Paul McKenney was not there, and so his vote will be extremely important when the decision is made, what goes to the public as far as the vote is concerned. It was mentioned earlier, and I'll just mention it again, if we, if at some point we go to a 0% tax increase, we do have approximately $140,000 to look at. However, I did not get direction from anyone on that. I'm not sure that you would want to give direction on that, and so, at this point in time, we'll be waiting to see how that all plays out. And I will report just in a few minutes about also the MLTI and the discussions we had today about the stimulus package.
Any questions for Alan?
I would just like to say one more thing. I'd like to thank each one of the board members who spoke last night. It was, your voices were well-heard and well-practiced and well-planned, and I truly appreciate that. And I've had a lot of feedback during the day from people who saw it and were very pleased with the comments from the board members, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Alan. Insurance committee, I think that's me. If you guys recall, during some of our meetings with the town councilors, it was suggested that a committee be established to look at how, study the healthcare coverage for our municipal and school employees to see that we're getting the best coverage at the most, in the most efficient cost programs. So the town council has established a committee to do that. It's established that the Cape Elizabeth Employee Health Insurance Review Committee, the committee shall consist of seven members jointly appointed by the town council chairman and the school board chair. One member shall be a member of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council and one member shall be a member of the Cape Elizabeth School Board. Anyone in the business of selling healthcare coverage or currently working for a company offering healthcare coverage is excluded from membership due to potential conflict of interest. The remaining membership would be citizens who are interested. It's a, the committee's charge is to review the healthcare coverage and benefits offered to municipal and school employees. The committee shall prepare recommendations for opportunities for changes in coverages provided to employees, for changes in providers of coverage, and for employer and employee cost shares. The committee shall include an analysis of how any recommendations may influence the ability of the local government or school department to recruit and retain quality employees. The committee shall meet for up to six months and its report shall be submitted jointly to the Cape Elizabeth School Board and the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. The town council and school board shall collaboratively review the report and proceed thereafter to independently consider the recommendations. So, given that, if a member of the school board, anyone who's interested in serving on that committee, I will toss that out now, if there's anyone who's interested right now, or if not, you can let me know and we can pass along your name to, for the committee.
I have a question on the intent of that committee. Is that committee's intent to look at getting, and maybe I missed it, look at getting the same benefits at a better cost? Are they looking at restructuring the whole benefits program?
I think it's, it shall review the healthcare coverage and benefits offered to municipal and school employees. And I think it's, I, the committee shall prepare recommendations for opportunities for changes in coverage provided to employees, for changes in provider and for employee, employer cost shares. I think the fact that they're looking for some recommendations on how it will impact our ability to recruit and retain quality employees, I interpret that to be positive, that it is, is there some advantage to sort of looking at this and sort of bargaining, changing the bargaining unit, or getting coverage for a larger group, which we have municipal and school? I think it's sort of looking at all of those things. And I think it is, obviously with some costs in mind, but I'm interpreting that line as a positive, that we want to get the best benefits that we can in a cost-competitive environment or cost-competitive way. Does that not answer your question, or?
No, it, it sort of does. I just, I want to be sure that, I just want to be sure on the intent of that committee and where they're headed and just, you know, I think that we have contractual obligations and want to make sure that we uphold those and respect those throughout this process.
I would think that that would be part of the conversation, but I think that's also why there's opportunity for school board voice on the committee and town council as well. So, is there anyone right now who is interested? And if not, let me know, because we do need to put someone on this committee. Okay?
You know, I'd be interested in serving.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mary. Pass along your name. Okay, Alan. Community services presentation to finance committees.
I think that's Kathy, am I correct?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Kathy? Okay.
The finance committee chair of the town council and I met with Janet Houshins on March 25th, I believe. And the intent of the meeting was that, as we talked about budget and the differentiation between, is it a school board budget, is it a town council budget, and where is it? So we thought what we'd do is we'd get together with Janet, and Janet provided, and you have in your packet, I call it the yellow and green thing. And it's very helpful if you've had a chance to go through it, because it differentiates between what are community service items, what are school board, you know, school-related items, what are town-related items. And, so it was very helpful. We also talked about, after the budget season is over, that we meet, when there's more time, after the budget season's over, that Alan and Mike and Janet and, you know, maybe chairs or whatever, to get together and try to work out, you know, what is, make clearer the reporting structure. It may not be that there's a change, but make clearer, you know, which one's going which way. Am I confusing you, Rebecca? You have a confused look on your face.
I just got something, I don't know where it came from or why I have it.
Oh. So, it was sort of a preliminary meeting, it was very helpful. And I found that the report that Janet had put together was really good at helping to understand that, you know, community services goes in a whole bunch of different directions and does town-wide things as well. And I think until you look at the report, you don't necessarily realize, you realize the parts that the school touches, but you don't necessarily realize the parts that the town touches, the municipal touches, you know, and those types of things. So, I want to thank Janet for all the time that she put into the report and the time she spent with us. And we're hoping that, moving forward, after the budget season, as I said, there can be some more discussion so that there's a clearer structure, so that when we get to budget, we're not going, well, is this our responsibility, or is it the town's responsibility, or is it a shared responsibility? Because I think that that becomes difficult for everyone, and if it's clearer. So Alan and Mike and Janet are going to get together and have that discussion sometime and see if they can't work out some of the, the little bit of bugs that might be there. So Janet, have I missed something? Would you want to add anything? You don't have to, I'm just saying if I've forgotten something. Okay, thanks. Yes?
Green is town, yellow is school, blue is?
Both.
Oh.
Yellow and green.
Yes.
Green should be both, really.
Yellow and blue make green. You're right.
Peter, Peter whack her. Just give her a little hit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathy, for taking the initiative to work on that, and I think that will save some time for everybody in the future. Okay, laptop and computer update. Alan.
Yes. What I've given you is several pages from the telephone conference we had today with the commissioner. What I've done is try to summarize some of it. I'm not going to go through it step by step, but just try to explain some of the information that's on it. If you look at the top of the first page, and I might add, there are copies down back. There were four focus areas today with the commissioner. The first one was the stimulus package, the second one was MLTI for the high schools, the third one was a revenue forecast, and the fourth one was Taiwan opportunities, I guess for those of us who want to get out of the craziness of budgets. So I'll talk about that at the end. The first thing we did was the stimulus package. What we found out today is that the EDU 279, which is our GPA document, you know, that several-page document, was mailed yesterday. Some superintendents had it this morning in the telephone conference. Unfortunately, we and others have not received it. It'll probably be here tomorrow morning. But that's the document that has the entire GPA information on it. It's the one we use as the basis of our budget. And so, very late, but looking forward to seeing it, to just see what it does tell us at that point in time, which I am sure will still tell us that we have a $500, $4,000 decrease in GPA. What I did was looked at the stimulus dollars that they talked about for Cape Elizabeth, because there are a lot of rumors out there. I had information from one person in the community the other day that asked me why I had signed a sheet of paper that gave me $1.2 million and hadn't done anything with it. I hadn't signed anything like that, because that had not come through. But I do have now a little clearer understanding. So what I've put in the box to show you is that the first thing that will be coming through to us is the $421,000, and there was some odd dollars with that, which replaces, you remember, that reduction that we were supposed to cover with $200,000 from the town and money from our budget. That money will be coming in, that money will be paid back to the state so that we don't have to take those monies out of our budget. So that's one piece that we're looking for. We are supposed to get it in early May, so that that will be paid back. So that's '09 budget.
And that's a wash.
And that's a wash. That is a wash. But what they did warn us today, and I'll talk about it later on here too, that, you remember the document I sent you that said that there's a $350 million to $500 million, another shortage? The commissioner talked about that today. The fear is that there will be more money taken out of the '09 budget before we close the budget books. But what she did say was that there is, they are planning at this point to utilize money that is set aside for fiscal year 11 stimulus money, to take care of that so we will not be caught short in closing our books for '09. She said that meeting with the state finance people will be in the next two weeks and they will get the definite picture of what that looks like. She said, I can't say to you that isn't going to happen, because she said, I'm pretty sure we will take another hard hit before June 30th of '09. But that her plan is to cover it. Now unfortunately, covering it with FY11 money stimulus means that won't be there for FY11. And if you remember the document I gave you the other day, she talked about the cliff of FY11. She talked today about that a lot, that we are going to see some, many more difficult situations with finances as we start doing, not this budget that we're finishing up right now, but as we turn around and start the 10-11 budget, that we will see those. Other monies that will be available from the IDEA, we've talked about that before, the special education funds, that we are expected to receive $421,436 additional dollars for 10, fiscal year 10. That will be combined with the $363,972 that we already got. And I know DOM is in the process, I think on Thursday, of meeting at the state level so that they can begin to look at how that money will be utilized. There are, with the stimulus money, some of the pieces that go with that is, up to 15% of it can be used for technology. There is also money to talk about as far as early childhood education. There are other programs within that. So that piece will be put together on Thursday to see just exactly where we are with that. I think that was the first time today that DOM has had those figures have come to him.
Alan?
So, yes.
Is there anything that would summarize for us, what are the stipulations for how the IDEA funds need to be spent?
I, that's what he'll get on Thursday.
It's the strings, the stipulations, the requirements.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, it's an application, so there's certain things you have to fill in, there'll be certain boxes, and there's a whole grant application that is there. I'll show you the ones that we have.
The next one is stimulus stabilization funds. This is the one that is, I think, was the $1.2 million that somebody asked me about. What is, what was made clear to us when we got our initial documents, that our cut in finances was really $1,204,459. The $699,120 added to the $504,339, which we have lost, made that amount. So, the $699,120 will come to us. The $504 is the piece of the GPA we have lost. And so, that is, from what I can understand, is what the $1.2 million was. Nothing that I put my signature on, but it was, was the way the money was distributed. If you remember, I gave you a document from Jim Ryer that talked about it at that point in time and talked about the difference in the two. Questions on that?
Yeah, I'm confused.
We were cut $1.2 million by the state. They used $699,000 of stimulus money to restore that funding back to the district, but we were still cut $504,000.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, that is the way I understood it today, when we got the report on it. There's also Title 1A money, but unfortunately, we, along with Yarmouth and Falmouth, do not qualify for 1A money as far as the stimulus package is concerned. So, we will not be getting that. The other monies that they talked about with us today are the grant funds that will be coming up. Those have not been cleared by the federal government yet, but we will be getting information on those pieces and what they may mean for us. So, as they come along, I will be bringing them to you, and I'll be bringing them fairly quickly, because the time we receive them and the time they need to be reported on will be fairly short. And a lot of those grant monies, they talk about, are the type of grant money where you work with a group of communities to do that. Some of you sat with me the other day in Mike McGovern's office, where we had a representative from a local law firm who came in and talked with us about some of these stimulus packages. And my understanding is, is the town is going to commit to this person to help us through some of this, so we can ensure we get the most money possible, which will be absolutely imperative as we move along. So, those are, those are some of the stimulus monies that we are talking about. Those are what we know of at this point. And we spent a lot of time today on this conference call, getting that information and getting it straightened out. The other thing that I want to impress with you is the fact, what I found interesting is the reporting charge that we have. It is much larger than I ever expected. If you look on the first page, again, where it says reporting, and it talks about the assurances, there are four basic assurances which you have to give. One is on college and career-ready standards and high-quality, valid, and reliable assessments for all students, including ELLs and students with disabilities. The second one is pre-K to higher education data systems that meet the principles of the America. And instead of that being completes, it's competes, so take the L out of it, act. The third one is teacher effectiveness and equitable distribution of effective leadership. And the last one is intensive support and effective interventions for lowest-performing students. The state in the beginning has to certify that these are the four areas that we will be looking at as school systems across the state. I think one of them that is, is very interesting to me, and I wasn't prepared to see it at that point, is the third one, teacher effectiveness and equitable distribution of effective leadership. And if you go to the next page, it talks about under C, where it says, "Show how schools improve and help schools improve." It talks about teacher effectiveness and ensuring that all schools have highly qualified teachers. What I have done in the ones that most affect Cape Elizabeth is I've put them in darker print and underlined them. So, if you notice, it says, "We look at the number and percent of teachers and principals rated at each performance level in each LEAs' teacher evaluation system." And the second one says, "Number and percent of LEA teachers and principal evaluation systems that require evidence of student achievement outcomes." Very interesting process. I had, as a matter of fact, I talked with Dwight earlier today, and I said, "I'm remembering probably about 10 to 15 years ago, when we talked about some of these things and the panic that went through teachers at that point in time, because what it really, what some people interpreted it as is being compared against other teachers based on the performance of kids in your classroom." I asked very specifically, "What are you telling us we need to do?" And what Susan told me, and also the rest of them there, is the entire country, of course, is looking at this. A majority of systems in the country do not have an evaluation system that has a very clear scale of success, you know, either using the 4-3-2-1, or using percentages, or using anything else. And so, what they are going to be doing nationally is looking at that and will be coming back with recommendations, either on a national scale or on a main state scale. But what it is going to mean for all of us here in Cape Elizabeth and the towns across the state, is we have got to truly look at our evaluation systems. You remember, you changed the evaluation system, I want to say in 2003, if I'm not mistaken. And so, now we're going to be at that stage of re-looking at that and see, does it fit the criteria? My assumption is, it does not. And so, we will have to move on from there.
Alan?
Yes?
What is LEA?
LEA is the Local Educational Area.
Thank you.
So, that's Cape Elizabeth. Sorry. Forget how confusing those can be. I went on and looked at the other ones. It talks about higher standards and rigorous assessments. I think probably that is the one we will probably find we are the most successful in, as we look at it. But we are going to have to look at our high standards and our rigorous assessments and how they work. And so, that all comes under the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment project that we're doing now. We have to look at intensive support, effective interventions, and improved achievement in schools that need it the most. You notice I did not underline anything here, because this is really talking about those districts that have low, many low-performing students. We don't fit into that category, but we will fit into some of the questions they ask. However, I did mark here, and I put in italics, charter schools are going to again be revisited. There is no doubt Maine, at this point in time, has held out charter schools, but they will be revisited because it is a push in the stimulus package. So, it is important that we realize that, and that that is an issue that will go before the legislature, I'm sure, in the next session.
Alan, may I ask a question about charter schools?
Yes.
What makes charter schools different than public schools? I mean, I know that there are public schools, but they're somewhat private.
Yes, the way they are set up, they are not managed by the town. They are managed by a group of people who oversee the program. They hire the teachers, they set the programs, they do receive some funding that a parochial school cannot get, or other private schools. But what has happened is, particularly in states where there are much larger school systems, Boston, New York, those types of places, they have taken the place of public schools, because there is strong feeling that they outperform the public schools. One of the issues that I found in doing research on the charter schools, because I did it for my master's plus 30 thesis, and one of the things I found out is, their requirements for special education students are not as rigorous as the requirements that we have in our public school system. They must take some, but they're not as rigorous. Charter schools supposedly are also schools that take in students, and they cannot be denied access there because of their actions. In a parochial school, you can ask a student to leave. In a private school, you can ask the student to leave. Charter schools are intended to maintain students on a regular basis, once they go there. The reason, I think, we have avoided it here in Maine is we are very small communities, and the pressure of charter schools would be very great. Probably the only city that could really possibly handle charter schools is Portland, then possibly Bangor, and possibly, I suppose, possibly South Portland, although I think it's fairly small. But a charter school does have a different operating plan. Teachers would find, if they're taught in charter schools or no charter schools, often are much less paid because of the amount of money that is available for them. And there's also a tuition piece that goes with that.
Okay. Now, Alan, don't they also have tremendous flexibility when it comes to curriculum?
Yes.
I mean, so they don't have the same constraints that the traditional public schools do? So, there is a huge benefit to them.
Yep, definitely. So, that will be, that will become an issue, there's no question about it, in states that already do not have charter schools, and we are one of them. They all talked about information for educators and the public to address the individual needs. This talks about how we communicate, in particularly the areas of math and ELA, which they see as the two basic areas, and how you get information out about how your students are performing. It talks about the federal reporting requirements, it talks about them on a quarterly basis, and they're very clear in saying, "It is quarterly and on time. You can't be two days late." There are award and award recipient information, there are project activity information, there are resources. There is an ed recovery team here in Maine who will work with us as school systems as we work our way through this process. But this is going to become a very difficult process, because it's going to come very quickly, and you must turn around the information very quickly.
I'm not trying to be flip, but they're tied to me that, are they going to be providing staff to be doing all of this work and reporting? I'm assuming the answer is no.
No, what will happen is, we will provide the information to them, then they will have staff to pull it together, to give it to the federal government. But what I asked, and so, perhaps I was being flipped, too, but I said, "Are we going to have a form that tells us what is the type of information we have, how do you set it up, et cetera?" And she said, "We would have that, and we would have this ed recovery team who would help us on individual issues."
Alan, is a lot of this information available on our computer system? So, depending on what you ask Gary and his folks to, you know, supply you with, you can fairly easily dump some of this information?
Some, not all. It's going to be interesting to see how this all plays through. At this point in time, I think our major reporting issue is with the IDEA, as far as where that is and what information we have, et cetera. And DOM will be overseeing that information and how it is managed at that point in time.
What's most remarkable is that we are, once again, being asked to do more work, and we still are getting less money.
Yep, yep, no, I would agree with you, and I thought that, and I was interested, I should mention this, that the commissioner, I was on several times asking questions, and at one point, I had Pauline with me to help me take notes, to be sure we had accurate notes. And at one point, the commissioner did say to me, "Alan, I have read your several letters, and I have looked at them carefully, and I would suggest you look at this, and this, and this." Unfortunately, my response had to be, "I have looked at this, and this, and this, and it hasn't helped me in the least." So, but she, she at least acknowledged that she had read my letters, so it was there. The second part of this was the MLTI program, which is the high school laptops. What she did was, she set the initiative and the reasons for the initiative, talked about the costs, and then on the next page, I asked her specifically, "Be clear to me, what does this all mean?" And I said, "In my understanding, what I'm looking at is, I am looking at, I have approximately 550 high school students. You're telling us we have $242 per student. However, what we understand, we don't have our newest GPA document, but last year, we were receiving, what was it, 21 points? I forget now what it was, .2109. So, in other words, for every $242 that is supposed to be in the budget, we received only $15.04 per student." So, we checked on that. We recognized that that $15.04 per student has been used in Gary's calculations for his technology budget within your budget. So, that's where that's been used. So, then I went to, okay, then let's talk about what I can take out of places. So, we went to the IDEA, we know we can have 15%. We have a total of $421,436 stimulus money. So, that would give us $63,215.40. We also know that at the high school, we have 51 identified students. Each one of those students in the IDA money is worth a full amount of the $242. So, that would give us $12,342. So, the total we would get with the stimulus money under IDEA, because we don't have Title 1 money, would be $75,557. Our total budget, or the cost for us for one year, remember this is all one year out of a four-year cycle, is $133,100. So, for fiscal year 10, if we're going to pay the first year of this, we are $57,543 short. Now, interestingly, the commissioner had up today, to be responded to by 5:00, a survey done on Monkey, we all know Monkey, to tell what we are going to do. The answers were yes, no, and investigate. I used investigating. I put my details on there to say, "This is where I'm at. I am shot $57,543 because I lost $504,000 in the GPA, and therefore, at this point in time, I do not have the money to make this happen." Interestingly, to me, between 3:00 and 4:30, I received two phone calls from people across the state who know me, and called me and said, "I hear you're stuck, I hear you're not going to be able to do this, what can I do to help you?" And they gave me some suggestions, and I have phone calls out now to certain people who have control of some grant money, to see if we might be able to get some more grant money. So, tomorrow, hopefully, I will get more information back from them. But at this point in time, I have told the commissioner that we are in the investigative mode, I don't have the money, I'm at a .6 tax increase, that does not give me money to do it, and I would have had the money if I didn't have the $504,000 cut. So, that's where I am.
Did you get a sense of how the other schools were leaning with regard to the laptop in your conversation?
From what I've been able to understand, and I also get this from Gary, because he was in ACTM meeting yesterday also, he said that there is a fairly large group of school systems around the state who are looking at other alternatives besides Apple. There are some that are looking at Apple, and there are a lot of them that are looking at no. So, one, because one of the keys, and I think why we had to do the survey today, and that's why I'm going to be in Augusta tomorrow, is the legislature has to act on this. And they have to have X number of systems doing the Apple program in order to get the money that Apple is offering. And so, tomorrow at 2:30, I will be in Augusta with the Education Committee of the Legislature to see where this is going. And one of the people that called me today will be at that meeting with me as well. So, we can take a look at this. But as I said to both people who called me, and I've said this to Susan today, we've been hit really hard in Cape Elizabeth. We are seen by most people as that very rich town, Cape Elizabeth. And I said, "Please understand we're not." And I am truly struggling with this issue, as is my board. And so, any help we might be able to get to at least allow the board to consider high school laptops is extremely important. And so, that's kind of where I am with the issue as of right now.
Alan, is it helpful if you get out to the board, the people on this education committee, in hopes that maybe we have any connections to any of these folks?
I do have that list, and I probably should have brought it with me. I will say to you that the Education Committee is a fair, a group of fairly new legislators, and none of them represent the greater Portland area, which has been, before, we did have Connie Goldman, when she was still in the legislature, was on it. I was trying to think who it was last year. But we had some leadership we knew, but it's a fairly unknown group. I will be interested in being there tomorrow, just to see where they are and what they have to say. My understanding also is, from ACTM and from some other groups I've talked with, there are a lot of angry people going to be there tomorrow. So, this could be, I have a meeting at 7:00 Thursday morning in Augusta, and so, I'm taking close, just in case I have to stay overnight in Augusta, because this is so late. But it will be interesting just to see what the feedback is. But ACTM has heard- But Acton has heard that there are some really, really angry people. I can't say I'm one of the happiest people in the world. So we're going to see how this all plays out tomorrow.
Are they angry for the same reasons that we are?
Well, angry for the same, angry for reasons, perhaps not. Perhaps they don't have the $504,000 cut, but there are other issues within this that they are upset about. And so it, it is, and I, as you know, I have to be politically very careful. There were questions I wanted to ask today, but I thought I have every superintendent in the state on this phone line, and I don't really want to see, be seen as trying to cut their throats as well. So one of the people who called me today is very active and will carry my message from there. And I would, I would like to say just a side note, too. I contacted Connie Goldman the other day about this, and I did not realize that Connie has given up all of the politics altogether. She has more or less retired, is looking for a new place, and with things that she's doing since her husband died. And I felt sadly about it, but I also understood her reasoning behind this. But I think it is important for you to know, because Connie has always been a very, very solid voice in legislative issues. And, but she has broken her ties with legislature at this point. Any other questions on the laptop? I wish I had magic answers.
The laptop is a state program?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure, determine which one's state and which one's federal.
Yeah, laptop is state.
Okay.
It's a state program. The third piece was the revenue forecast. I won't quite get a lot into that. I have reattached the document I sent to you the other day, which is the document that came from the federal government. It talks about the new forecast shortly. That's the forecast that says that we are probably going to lose more money in fiscal year '09. It talks about anticipated 9, 10, and 11 shock falls. She was very clear that we want to expect that, that cliff that she talked about before will be 11, and that we need to really keep very close tabs on the finances that we have to move into 11 so we'll have some revenue. She talked about the government legislative leadership is committed to honoring the fiscal year 10 GPA allocation. So I asked very quickly, I said, "I know you don't have the figures yet, but am I assuming that what you have for 10, I can expect in 11?" And she said, "Very probably," which therefore, to me, is a $504,000 decrease in 11, like it is with 10 in that process. The DOE has kept stabilization funds aside to mitigate the type of situation we're going to go in. That money is FY '11 money, and so it'll be used that way.
Alan?
Yes?
I just need to jump in.
Yep.
You think that we're going to get another $504,000 cut, or they're going to maintain the cut at its current level? The funding will stay current?
My sense was there's going to be a cut above and beyond the $504,000. No, wait just a minute. I said that wrong. Wait just a minute. My sense is there is going to be another cut in '09. Remember that first $421,000?
Not in '10.
Not in '10, at this point in time. But this would be '09.
So the original curtailment that we were told about, the 421, which presumably we're getting, we're being made whole.
Right, right.
She's now saying that there may actually be another number that is the curtailment.
And their plan is to keep us whole with money that has been set aside through the stimulus.
With the next curtailment, you mean? With the next piece?
If there's another curtailment for fiscal year '09, before June 30.
Information changes so rapidly.
Exactly.
It's so different. Do you really have any faith that any of this information you're getting is accurate and won't change tomorrow?
I certainly don't. Well...
Thank you, Peter, because I don't either.
I think it will change over and over and over again. I'll be very honest with you. I think Pauline would say that what she said today, I had heard a lot of people say, "When you open up the phones so that people can respond, you can hear everybody in the background talking." So you heard a lot of interesting comments, but I heard over and over again, "Well, this is today. What will tomorrow bring?"
Right.
So I think that's where we all are, and I agree with Peter. We just don't know where we're going to be. I, I think the thing that I am most interested in is the forecast that they'll get in two weeks and what that's actually going to say. They're predicting that $350 million to $500 million shock fall.
And that's a forecast from the state?
That's, that's from the group who does our financial forecasting.
For the state?
Yeah.
Because I think the state's bankrupt.
Oh.
Or close to it.
It scares me. Yep. So that's, that's what I have for information. And you're all exactly right. I could come to you next week at this time and give you a whole different set of information, probably, as we move along. The only thing I can say that, at least to hear it as of today where we are, is helpful instead of trying to guess what I've done for two weeks when I haven't gotten any answers. The final piece is the Taiwan opportunities. Why it was connected to this, I don't know, but it was connected to this and it was offering, Maine teaches an opportunity to go to Taiwan to teach, and Taiwan teaches to come to Maine to focus on Mandarin and math and science. So I did add that there, just if any of you would like to go over why I didn't want to leave you out of the process, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Alan. Any other questions for Alan?
So we're no closer to getting any information about how they funneled, how they funneled the money through and why other districts?
I, I think the closest I've got is this. It's happened, and we're not going to get any further answers. Now, I would say this, Pauline probably agree with me. We could get a shock tomorrow when we see EDU 279, but I don't think we will. But we have not seen that yet, and we heard the discussions from the superintendents that did have it.
But there's, but there's, there's two issues here. One is the cut, and one is understanding why we got cut and others didn't. I, I think we're all fairly cognizant of the fact that we aren't going to change the cut.
But why?
But I think that we can continue to pursue the why, not, they can tell us until they're blue in the face why we got cut. What we still have yet to even touch upon is why we got cut and Yarmouth did not.
That's right.
And that tomorrow, Alan, is the one thing is, you know, we, we can be the district that's not getting red in the face because we got cut. Can we please be the district that says, "Please, help us understand how these differences are between districts so that we can plan better?"
And my intent tomorrow, I know what it's going to be like up there for parking, so I'm going to go fairly early. And my intent is to go to see Jim Ryer, and since he hasn't responded to me by email, and because Jim is the one who, whether you agree with it or not, is the one who oversees this, and he is the one that should be giving me the answers. And Jim will also be in the discussion, I'm sure, but I intend to get any answer one way or the other from him before I leave tomorrow, so.
Yeah, because to back, piggyback on what Rebecca said, and I think we've all said, there's no smoke and mirrors that need to be happening here. A plus B equals C.
Exactly.
And if they can't explain it, that means that either they are attempting to cover up what they are doing, or they don't understand it themselves, or they've plugged it into a program that's not working properly.
All right.
Which is, you know, could be the case as well. But if he can't explain, "I took this number, Alan, and this number, this number, and that's how it came out."
I agree with you. Yep.
Then, then we have an explanation. Then if we want to say, "Well, we're not in agreement with how you do it," that's a different animal altogether. But the explanation, and I think if we back down because there's all this other smoke and mirrors that's kind of happening, that we will wish we hadn't.
And I think, I think you all know, I know several of you have given the copies of the emails to you, there have been a constant stream of emails so that they can't say they haven't heard from us. And so what I need is the other end of that. What are the answers to the emails as we go through?
Right, particularly as we move forward to next year where our valuations have dropped, and we should be seeing a little bit of easing of the curtailment. I would hate to see the formula change. I want to make sure we're stuck with the same formula.
And that's another fear for me.
She clearly has your emails because she said she got them, right?
We heard her say that today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Alan. Moving on to new business, consideration to approve high school athletic fee position? I think there's just one.
I have one, and if you remember the last time, we did not accept Billy Brown's because he had to have his fingerprinting done. That has been done. And Jeff, I don't know if you want to speak on Billy for just a minute, particularly since I noticed that this is marked as a new position and new hire. Do you want to talk?
It's not.
It's not a new hire.
Oh, it's not? Oh, I'm sorry. I saw the N, so I thought that meant new. I'm looking at it sideways.
It meant no.
Yeah, no. Sorry about that.
I move that we approve the high school athletic fee position as presented by the superintendent.
Second. Thank you, Rebecca and Linda. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Consideration to approve the proposed school calendar for 2009-10. Do we want to table this? Because the policy committee is discussing it tomorrow.
That's right.
Well, I did ask John to come tonight just to give you an overview because I thought you did want that, and John is kind of the spokesman for the group. Would you mind if he just gives a brief overview of it for the board now so you'll have that?
Nope.
So...
I want to hear your thoughts.
As John comes up, I do want to say this. The principals and the assistant principals in the DLT have worked on this long and hard based on a lot of information we have received. John has been the one who's taken the leadership on it, and I appreciate that very much. And I did ask John to come tonight because I had understood when we had the planning meeting for this, that you did want to hear a quick overview. And so I asked John to come and also to answer any questions you may have.
And so you have to do it twice, John. You can be quick.
Before I started, just wanted to go over the middle school, Tom. It really was a fantastic performance and much like a high school play. And I think I'll let Jeff and Tom Lozot know that...
I had the privilege of walking through the doors this morning, and the jazz band was playing. And wait till you get that jazz band, because it sounded like a high school jazz band when I walked in the doors this morning. So it's a, it's a real, real pleasure to see that, that happen. As far as the calendar, when the district leadership team took the task of doing this, it was in January, and somehow, yes, I was chosen as the calendar chair. I think it was an act of collusion, one of those where the entire DLT was asked to step forward, and everybody stepped backwards, and I was left out front. But I'll just speak briefly to the process and the highlights of the calendar, and then you can ask me any questions. I'll try and answer them. The process, there was, there was original input asked of all the staffs in the three buildings back in January and February. That information was, was compiled, and there were four drafts made by the DLT. One on January 15th, one on January 21st. Budget got in the way a little bit for a while. Another one on March 8th, a fourth one on, on March 31st. At that point, we went back to the staff after the four drafts and asked for one more final input from the three buildings. Tried to collate that information, served the majorities as best we could, and looked for trends. And the final draft that is set before you tonight should say 4/7, I hope. Right? Okay? And it will be also presented to the policy committee tomorrow. Some of the areas that I'd like to highlight as you look at it, first would be a late Labor Day start this year, next year necessitates an early start for us. So the first student day is September 1st, which is a Tuesday. Okay?
Thank you.
Teachers begin on August 25th, which is a Tuesday. And if you look closely at that beginning for school, for teachers, we have purposely front-loaded four teacher days at the start of school to focus on professional development directly in four areas, curriculum instruction, assessment, and technology. There is also a plan for a district presentation on the 26th by Dr. Ross Green, Harvard psychologist. Jeff, hold the book up. He's a, he's a creator of a collaborative problem-solving approach to student discipline. He's the author of several books, Lost at School, The Exposed Child, and he'll be coming to our school to work with our entire staff in all three buildings. There's 175 student days, as always. The, the last school day, Monday, June 14th, or if you put five snow days on, that would be June 21st. There are seven teacher days, as I said, K through 12. You just saw August, four of them, August 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, in attempt to really go at some continuity and also do all the things we have to do at the beginning of school to get ready. It seems we're asked to do more and more. So we really put four up front to build some continuity. There is one on October 23rd, and that's the usual parent conferences full day, and that's K through 12. There is one on November 23rd for professional development, and one on April 16th. There is one building flex day on November 24th. So if you look at that, that would bring the teacher days to 183. And of course, don't forget that there's two personal flex days, which add to two more, which would bring the total teacher days to 185. The pairing of the November 23rd, K through 12 professional day, and the November 24th building flex day brings back a past practice of grieving families and students the entire full week at Thanksgiving. That had been taken away the last year or two, and it's restored. That was one of the things that was noted on a lot of feedback forms. Early release days, the high school continuing and having very few, there's only one, October 22nd, and that's obviously for parent conferences. Middle school in Pond Cove, K through 8, there are five. You'll see that one of them, of course, is October 22nd, parent conferences. You'll see that another one is December 9th, that's a Wednesday. That is for a math workshop involving curriculum instruction and assessment, grades three, four, and five. And then if you look at the others, January 29th, March 19th, March 26th, and May 28th, you'll notice that they've been moved to Fridays, and that, that is a new attempt to try and see if having a full day on Monday, a full day on Tuesday, a full day on Wednesday, a full day on Thursday, and then the half day on Friday might lead to some more consistent practice. I think that was, Jeff, you might have even voiced that idea, but it was, it came back in several feedback forms from all three buildings. And once it was put in on the draft, it was, it was highly supported, so we're, we're trying to change that. K through four early release days, there's three, K4 only, September 5th, February 5th, and April 9th. And the other major highlight is the change in start times. If you look, the high school and the middle school have flip-flopped. The high school will now start at 7:55, finish at 2:20, and the middle school will start at 8:00 and start, stop at 2:30. So those are the major changes and highlights. Questions?
Could we save our questions for tomorrow's policy meeting? Because I don't have the other, I don't have this year's calendar with me, and I'd like to come here, because I'd like to see what the actual changes are.
Sure.
From one year to another. So maybe I'll just save that till tomorrow.
That's fine.
I just have one comment, because I will not be at that meeting tomorrow. Appreciate the continuity aspect of having those days go together at the beginning. My only comment is the reflection that usually needs to take place at the end of the school year, and there's really no time allotted for that. So for whatever that's worth, I know we only have so many days, but typically, ideally, in the ideal world, you'd have about four days before and four days after. I know that's not part of the contract because it's probably too many days, but best practices would probably would benefit from not only the pre-planning, but also the post-planning.
Anybody else?
I know there's legislation out there trying to lengthen the school year. Have you guys been keeping an eye on that, John, at all? And I don't know when that would be, you know, if they do pass that legislation, when that would be.
I haven't heard.
Okay.
Alan, have you?
It's not. Have you heard, Rebecca?
It's not going to pass. It'd cost more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would cost us...
It's not going to pass.
Okay.
If it does, I'll come and clean your house.
Okay.
Karen, I appreciate your comments. I understand what you're saying. I think the effort to put them at the front was really to, to really get us some momentum started at the beginning.
I love the idea of four days, so I'm not at all discounting that. I think it was fantastic.
Right.
I wish we had four more.
Right. And, and we do, most of the teachers are involved in some type of professional development in the summer, getting ready for the next year right afterwards, so.
I was thinking more of the effort of work we're trying to do, the district work.
Right.
Thank you, John. To all the committee that worked on that. Okay, consideration of proposal from Cape Elizabeth High School teacher Lisa Millanson to lead an EF educational tour to Europe during April vacation 2010. Lisa?
Hi, Trish. Thank you.
Hi, Trish. Thank you. I'm Lisa Millanson, and I'm a teacher at the high school. This would be the fourth trip through EF Educational Tours that I would be leading. So, I'm here to ask permission to lead a tour for April Vacation 2010. The travel dates would be April 17th, that's a Saturday, returning on, I believe, the 25th, that's a Sunday. So, no school days would be missed. In the past, I've taken a group to England, last year to Italy and Spain. This year, this Friday afternoon, we're leaving for Dublin, London, and Wales trip. And next year, I would like to take a group to France, Germany, and the Alps. I checked first with high school teacher David Peary, because I know he also tends to plan, and every other year, a trip to France, which is an exchange program. I said, "David, would this compete with your trip?" He said, "Not at all. It's a different type of trip." So, I have his blessing to go ahead. We'd arrive in Paris, spend a couple of days in Paris, visit the Louvre, tour the Notre Dame Cathedral. There's an optional trip to Versailles. We go on through Burgundy to the Lusserne region of Switzerland. There's an optional trip there as well, to Mount Pilatus. And then through Liechtenstein to Munich. And in Munich, there's sightseeing, and there's also an excursion to Dachau concentration camp. And we finish with a walking tour of Munich and return home on the ninth day. So, it's a nine-day tour. This trip is open to students in grades 9 through 12. They don't have to be affiliated with any particular language or history class. And I think that's been the strength of these trips so far. If they have French or German language skills, of course, they can use them, they can practice them. And I found even in Italy and Spain, my son encountered French-speaking people and tried out his French there. So, I think if you have one language, you're apt to have foreign language, you're apt to be able to practice it there. Let's see. The cost of the trip to students is $2,229. That includes the airfare, accommodations for seven nights, breakfast and dinner daily, walking tours in Paris and in Munich, a tour director who travels with us and sort of paves the way for all our arrangements. What else? And also any admission to any attractions that we go to see. In terms of educational value of the trip, I think there are ties to many aspects of our curriculum, history, certainly, world languages, art and architecture. And I think there are connections to geography, understanding the world, and other cultures, maybe understanding that the world's a larger place than just America. I think these trips are a wonderful way for students to mature, to experience a little freedom within a guided structure. And I've enjoyed doing them so far, so I hope you'll allow me to do them again. Are there any questions or concerns?
Do you need a school board chaperone?
Well, I'll let you know. Adults are welcome to come on the trip. In the past, we've had parents come along. It's a slightly higher fee for adults, but...
Sounds great.
Yeah. And I typically have had other chaperones besides myself. This year, my husband is going. Last year, my husband went as well. Ginger Raspiller is coming this year, and her husband Ken. Oh, and our trip this year includes Chevres students, so that's been a nice connection. So, we have 18 students this year from Cape, eight from Chevres. One of the Chevres students is a Cape resident, so total of 26 students. So, the trips have actually grown in popularity. I started off with a dozen each of the first two years, and now it's almost, it's more than doubled.
Can I have a motion to...
I move that we approve the proposed EF Educational Tour to Europe during April Vacation 2010.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there a second, Mary? Any comments or additional questions for Lisa? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. I guess I asked the same question, Rebecca. The policy for second reading, the Policy Committee, have we reviewed these, or are you doing those tomorrow? I think that we...
Yes.
It's changed because the Policy Committee meeting got changed. So, I think we need to table this approval until after the meeting. Okay, so we will table item D. Consideration of the proposed superintendent's evaluation document. Linda?
Well, the Human Resources Committee met on April 2nd. We finalized revisions to a form we started to work on last year, and began working with in December before renewing Alan's contract. Mary was kind enough to go through and do some proofreading. I do see that we do have one word that we need to correct in the form that was put in the board packet that got missed. It refers to the superintendency, and we changed that to superintendent. So, barring that change, I'd like to entertain any questions, or I'd like to see if anybody had any questions other than that on the form that was presented.
I'm curious about the superintendent evaluation timeline. Is this the timeline that we are going to hopefully implement? So, this is customized for...
For us.
For us. Great. And I noticed it looked as though it was in alignment with how we want to proceed and everything. And then, so that's great. And then my next question was, there is this 360 self-evaluation piece, and I know that's, I think, an optional piece for you or on it, but I would hope that that'd be something to you consider, because I think it's always a meaningful exercise to get feedback in that manner.
Linda, this timeline that you have put together, is, how is this different from the timeline that we had this year?
It isn't.
It isn't? Okay.
We did add, we did amend this to incorporate the school board's self-evaluation, align it with the goals that we set at the beginning of the year for the check-in mid-year before we vote to renew the contract.
It's different than what we did.
As you know, I had some concerns with the timing of this process this year. And it was my hope that we would have a significant change in the way we schedule various parts of this. In particular, the, I would like to see us actually evaluate both much closer to when we have the discussion of renewal. I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that we're evaluating in June, and then in December, we have a 20-minute conversation around the contract. So, I guess, I was under the impression at our January workshop that we were going to really try to undergo a change in the, a change in how we organize the process, not so much the actual evaluation itself, because I think a lot, that has been working pretty well. But that, the time, you know, the timing has always been so off.
Well, and we had discussions on that in, within the committee itself. And a lot of us felt also by doing, trying to do a full evaluation mid-year with new board members also did not make a lot of sense. I mean, it made more sense to align the true evaluation by setting the goals before the beginning of the year, doing the check-in on the progress of the goals in November prior to the vote to renew the contract, doing the full evaluation at the end of the school year.
That didn't happen this year.
No.
So, it's not working.
Or not at the end of the school year, though.
Well, what happened in December was not what we wanted to have happen. And we were going to try to fix that. I want to make sure we're not having the same experience again. And I don't know if we're not changing the timeline, how we're going to avoid that. I mean, when, new board members sit in December, correct? They're elected in November, they sit in December. So, why can't we have a evaluation period that goes from, let's see, how would this work? January, December to November, or something like, or January to December, and we perform the evaluation in November, in time for the conversation that happens in December, as forced by state law?
May I comment on that? My concern with that timeline would be for a board to set goals for the second part of one year and the first part of the next year. I think we should be setting goals for a school year, what we want to achieve. And then we come in at different times to evaluate the progress on that. And my understanding of this December date, where the superintendent reports interim progress, people coming on board, there would have been goals already in place. We would be at least getting a report, which would put us, I think, in a much better position to evaluate the superintendent prior to that deadline that we've been so sensitive to. I think you are absolutely right that that did not take place next year. I think we're wanting to make sure. It does take place, so we're setting things up to make sure it does take place. That's how I'm interpreting this.
I don't see a problem going January to December. It's all, it's all, it's all a year. Our goals don't start and stop, and it's kind of an artificial thing to say that our year is September. We, as a board, sit all year long. We can have goals that go from January to December.
Do you have a comment on that, Alan?
No, I...
An opinion on that?
My sense is, is that you are my, you are the people who hire me. So, however you want to do this...
In terms of when you set the goals, though, setting it from December to December versus a school year?
To me, it would be easier to have it a school year, because you have a beginning and an end within that one year. But, you know, it's based on what the board wants to do.
Didn't we meet in January as a board and set our goals? Because we had a new board that sat into December, we purposely waited until January to set our goals so we could include the new board members. So, at that point in time, that's when we're setting our goals. We're not setting it in August, or June, or whatever, for the following year. We're setting them in January.
We did this year.
Right.
But in previous years, we have sat and done them in August or early September.
But we're always cycling through election periods where people, new board members, sit in December. And the discussion of the board was, they, that we were, we thought it was much more appropriate to wait for goal-setting until January. So, now are we not going to do that? Are we going to set goals in September this year and not wait for the new board?
Well, we're going to do a check-in in June, so...
Right, because we set our goals in January.
I actually, I think Rebecca's points are well-taken. I mean, is there any reason why we don't shift this from, sorry, now I'm contradicting what I just said three minutes ago, but I'm listening to what you're saying.
I appreciate that.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't shift this January to January? Isn't just a matter of bumping the whole thing back? Because I think we did have that discussion where I thought we had sort of different dates based on that. So, is this more in alignment with what had been proposed, how this other?
I'm not following your question. As far as these dates?
Yeah, how do we select?
Actually, the original form we took this from says as soon, as close to the beginning of school as possible. So, we actually set dates rather than saying...
I think what couldn't, the problems lie in that board, the election in November and our renewal of the contract in December totally flies in the face of a school year.
Right.
Because I, but if we step back and say, this is, is an evaluation of the superintendent, and typically, his work and goals take place during a school year, shouldn't the school year drive this particular evaluation? I can see that our evaluation would be different. It would follow our tenure. But if, I know not all the goals are one year, but I think if we do two check-ins, January, June, or November, and whatever, June, you're going to evaluate him on what he's accomplished during the school year. I mean, I understand that there's a contradiction here, but I think...
I can't support this. This hasn't, this process has not worked since I've been on the board. We have not had a well-functioning evaluation process, not, not for any...
No, no.
You know, I'm not blaming anybody at all. It's because of this artificial timeframe of the, of the state law requiring us to make a decision in December, and because we have new board members in November, we are being forced off of the sink of our natural cycle. And I have been incredibly frustrated, as you know, and it's been growing every year. So, I have to say, I look at something that does not reflect any change from what we've been doing. I can't support it. I gotta, we have to, for me, I feel we have to try something new.
But it also, this timeline also does fall in line with his actual contractual date. I mean, I agree with you as far as...
Yeah, but his contractual dates have nothing to do with when we make the decision, unfortunately. We're deciding in December on a contract that starts and ends in June and July. So, it does not, this doesn't work.
Well, except now, something you said, just, I'm just thinking out loud here. I'm not challenging per se. But if we, if you're only doing a new board member, you could do the interim review in November, when you have the board that's been, has the information to perform the evaluation, then when you're setting new goals, the new board members will have been on the board for six to seven months, and should have some experience to be able to work more closely with their superintendent to develop those goals, to perform more of a full-fledged evaluation than the November evaluation.
The current sitting board has every right to evaluate superintendent on the past year's work. You do not need to wait for new board members to sit, have six months of experience, to then evaluate.
No.
And I am very uncomfortable about making a decision on a contract based on an interim check-in. I don't think any business would do that.
What's the recommendation of the Human Resource Committee?
With the minor change, typographical change, the recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to accept the documents submitted, including the timeline, evaluation forms, and check-in forms, as submitted.
Am I wrong? It's not the Human Resource Committee?
I'm sorry.
We renamed it. Oh, sorry.
All right.
Personnel Committee.
I'm sorry. Human Resources.
Is it?
It's the Human Resources Committee.
Oh, I see. I got it.
It is. I'm sorry.
And it's on...
Used to Personnel.
And it's on the docket tonight to be voted on?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Any other, oh, we don't have a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Cape Elizabeth School Board Superintendent Evaluation as presented.
Thank you, Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy? Okay. Additional comments, questions, discussion?
I would just like to reiterate, I do share Rebecca's concern. And I love, I love this timeline in terms of how it plays out, how we would do it. Ideally, we would look at it at different times to be, for the same, for the reasons why we've had problems with this in the past when we're evaluating, when his contract comes up, et cetera. It doesn't make much sense to me to do it the same exact way, although I love this evaluation, and I get that. So, I will not be supporting it.
Because of the timeline, is that...
Because of the timeline.
I would say as a new board member who, my first meeting was in December, having to vote on a contract then, it seemed, I guess it did seem to be, the timing seemed off. I guess I wonder if there is an issue with this, why we wouldn't go back into committee and take a look at it again. It seems like it's just one month off, and explore possibly changing the timeline.
Question I have for you. As a new, as a new board member, would you have been ready to do an evaluation of the superintendent at that point in time?
No. I mean, I think what Rebecca's talking about is doing an evaluation in November, which would be, or October.
Which still affects, the vote doesn't take place until December. So, it still affects, I mean, that's not going to change new board members. It's not going to change the position at that point in time, except they'll have a completed document at that point in time.
I don't think the law requires us to have the vote in December. It requires us to have the vote by December. So, possibly you could have, again, I'm just thinking off the top of my head. I haven't been able to think thoroughly through what would be my recommendation, but you could possibly have your evaluation in early November and then have the vote in November before the new board gets set. Just a thought.
And on that same thought, I guess I would be a little concerned about exiting board members with opinions at that point in time. members with opinions at that point in time.
I guess I hear both points also, but I'm just wondering if you perform that evaluation in October so that you can vote on it in November, are you adjusting the schedule of the goals? How do you assess completion of goals mid-year?
Right.
Because that's really what the evaluation is, is accomplishments and achievements of the superintendent, and you will be assessing them in October or at the start of a school year. I mean, you still are going to have a gap. You're going to primarily be reviewing work that took place in the previous school year. So either way, there's sort of a split.
Can we change state law?
Yeah, I think that's our only option.
Yeah, I think that...
We've had so much luck with the state. Yeah, we should really try to do that.
Let's call Susan and do what she thinks.
They made it school board so very well.
Now I see.
Is there any other comments, discussion? We do have a motion on the table. You have a suggestion that it goes back to Human Resources? I don't know. What is the...
We should take a vote.
We need to vote.
We need to vote on the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before I call the vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving the superintendent's evaluation as presented, including the timeline, I think that was the motion, all those in favor.
Is that fine?
Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you to the Human Resource Committee for all the work on that. Consideration to approve the Science Curriculum Learning Goals as presented to the School Board at the March 24, 2009 workshop. We don't actually have a copy of those. We were presented, provided that at the workshop, and we discussed at that point about approving them, so...
I move that we approve the Science Curriculum Learning Goals as presented to the School Board at the March 24, 2009 workshop.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee and the Science Team for all their hard work. I think it's really exciting that we're making this forward movement, and everybody's laughing.
We're eating candy down here. Swapping it back.
We've had important things going on down here.
As long as we're not laughing at the science curriculum. So really, this is great news and great development, and I am going to be happily supporting this.
Thank you, Rebecca. Was there a second?
Yes.
Kathy, okay. Any other comments or questions? I'd just like to echo Rebecca's comments and thank all the people who worked on that. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, committee reports. I know there are a few people that want to...
Should we do the Gendron...
Oh, God, I keep forgetting that. Yes.
Yeah, I forgot that in.
Our adjustment to the agenda, I didn't put it, I wrote the letter G and then never put down what we were doing. I had circulated to all of you, and I received some feedback in terms of edits, a draft of a letter that we would send to Commissioner Gendron and anyone else you guys would like to send it to, asking for an explanation of the GPA allocation questions that we discussed earlier this evening. So I guess I ask if there are any other edits, if people feel that this is something that the board should be doing.
I definitely feel it's something the board should be doing, and I think it's a well-crafted letter, and I appreciate your taking the time to articulate what I think many, if not all of us, are feeling.
I specifically like the last thing that Rebecca added on the bottom.
Which was what?
The accurately report this to our community members and local taxpayers. I thought that was very well done.
Accuracy. For the state of Maine.
I'm wondering...
Take the credit. I don't know.
You didn't do it. Okay, well, whoever said it, it was lovely. Thank you. I'm wondering if we should send this certified. Why stick it in the mail?
That's a good idea.
I plan on carrying a copy tomorrow with me to read.
Even better.
Right.
Better.
I was just waiting to get the approval. I'll have it put on your stationery and take copies with me.
Great.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is the signatures, but since I wasn't sure where you were going to be tonight on this, I would like to at least be able to read it tomorrow.
Yes. Great. Thank you, Trish.
We give you power, Attorney.
Right.
Should we, we should vote on this?
Yes.
Could I have a motion then to approve and to send with Alan to Augusta tomorrow the letter to Commissioner Gendron questioning the GPA calculations?
Come on.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, the second document we talked about was, and I guess I, after your conversation, I guess I questioned whether we still want to do this, was a statement on the laptop program, sort of indicating, it sounds like you've done some calculations since then. This was originally drafted so that Alan could read this at the laptop to indicate that we supported, we have interest in the laptop program, but because of the EPS funding formula and our allocation, we really can't consider affording this. Is this something that we are still interested in doing? Alan, do you get a sense that it's worth doing after?
I do. I do. A message from the board. I'm going to talk about the funding issue myself, so...
Now, tomorrow, when you get this GPA, GPF, whatever, whatever the form is, the three-letter form, it could change.
Could. I doubt it, but it could.
Okay. So you're just, you're comfortable doing it as is, given today's date at 5:00 this afternoon?
We could just say in the motion that we approve this to be submitted...
At the discretion of...
At the discretion of the superintendent, if should there be any changes in the funding formula. No, funding formula, but you know what I mean. GPA funding. It's late.
Okay, I move...
I was going to say, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the statement on laptop program with the understanding that should information arrive at the superintendent's office that would change the situation, he would not submit it.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Any comments, questions, edits, discussions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. I think that was all of our adjustments to the agenda before I move on to committee reports. And I know there are several people who want to speak, so I will just start down there and you can go around and speak for your committee.
Does anybody?
Yep, go ahead, Rebecca.
No, not, not need a report?
Did you need a report? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I have several, which I've been a little...
They don't always take the time, and we're usually, it's usually 9:30 instead of 8:30. But I would like to give you an update on the CEF grants and just a few of the items going on with CEF, as my role as School Board Liaison to CEF. The CEF Grants Committee worked very hard last week reviewing and listing to about 18 different grant proposals from the Cape faculty and staff. As usual, each grant was compelling and difficult decisions took place regarding staying true to CEF's mission while being mindful that CEF cannot fund everything requested. The 2009 grant, Spring Grant Slate, will be presented to the full CEF board, which is actually taking place right now, and the results will be posted on their website once approved. It is always a pleasure for me to serve on the Grants Committee as a School Board Liaison, to hear the exciting things that the professionals in our schools want to explore and take on to enrich our schools. It's definitely, one of the things I look forward to, even though it's completely exhausting for two nights from 4:00 to 8:00 or 4:00 to 9:00, it is fun. There's good energy there. I also wanted to let everyone know that CEF now has changed their how you can give. They're calling it targeted giving, and the Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation has made this an exciting addition for accepting donations. The targeted funds, excuse me, recognizing that many community members feel passionate about particular aspects of their children's education and schools, this change will enable individuals and businesses to have a role in directing how their contributions are used. While they expect their general fund to continue to support a wide variety of exciting grants, these new funds will allow for more dedicated use for future grant giving. Grant categories will be technology, math and science, teacher professional development, academic achievement, arts enrichment, and outdoor experiences, fitness and wellness. Additionally, they will offer their donors the option of directing the contributions directly to their endowment. There will also be a CEF pasta with a purpose spaghetti dinner and grant celebration on May 30 from 5:30 to 7:30 in the MSPC Cafeteria, which is the night before the Pond Cove 5K So that's my CEF one. So now I want to do the teaching and learning one, because we actually had our first official teaching and learning...
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
I have a question. I think when I read your CEF grants that came through, and stop me if I'm wrong, I thought that there was something about hiring an individual for something. I'm not sure if it was a...
Grant writing? Hmm? Grant writing?
No, I think it was almost like they were going to be funding, like, an athletic coaching position, and I just wanted to be sure that that came to the board for approval.
Well, and Alan, actually, we met again with them this morning to go over all of them. There wasn't one for, there wasn't anything around athletics. The only thing I can think of would be the debate.
It was like a stipend position for something, and I don't have it with me.
I think it was drama.
I just want to make sure that if we're hiring somebody for that, even if it's financed through CEF, it has to come to the board for approval.
Yes, the only one that I can think of is that the Lincoln Debate one, possibly?
I think so. I think that must be what you're talking about. It's the only one I can think of.
Yeah, I just, I don't have it with me.
Because that was the one brought up this morning.
I circled it. I saw that, and I said, ooh, that one's got to come to the board for approval.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that up sometime.
No, and I'm glad that you did bring that up, because I don't think that was in the back of my mind. I think I had forgotten, I'll be perfectly honest, that that's something that has to come before the board. I know I sent all of them out, so, and I'm glad that you took the time to read through them. So it sounds as though, if that's something that we agreed upon and spoke to CEF about, that we do need to revisit that with them.
Because an employee, whether it's volunteer or paid, is still, has to be approved through the board?
So as far as...
Pardon?
Okay, so as far as handling that, Alan, you want me to get in touch with Christine about that?
Well, I think the steps were that, number one, we need to see if they're even going to fund it.
Correct.
And then we'll need to bring it back to the board at that point in time, yeah. That was, I think it was the Lake Green, right? The one that went in after all the rest were due.
Yes. I'm pretty sure it's the debate stipend that you're talking about. So, thank you, Kathy. Then the Teaching and Learning Committee has had their first meeting, and I sent out the minutes to everyone. I don't know if they were posted on the website, and hopefully people had the opportunity to review it. We met on April 9 to discuss the objectives and goals for the newly formed Teaching and Learning Committee that will operate as a School Board Standing Committee. The following objectives were identified. To work with the district's Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee, guiding development and review of curricular goals as outlined in the district's Curriculum Management Plan, or CMP, consistent with the goals and objectives of the district. To inform and direct the board's annual approval of learning goals in support of the district's educational mission. To guide the board in periodic assessment of progress toward achievement of these goals. To oversee fiscal and educational assessment of curriculum-related goals and programs. And to oversee slash guide framework for communication of and progress toward these goals to the public. These items were discussed as next steps by committee members present, and the committee members too, Linda Winker, Mary Townsend, Rebecca, myself. Trish was also there. The first one was to define a timeline to be approved by board for the CMP goals, and I'm hoping to have an opportunity to start working on that with Alan to then go back and present to the committee. The second one, to prepare a schedule for meetings slash workshops to oversee these Curriculum Management Plan goals. Third one, to formulate structures for workshops incorporating the CMP goals timeline and program slash resource assessment. Fourth, to develop forms for fiscal and educational assessment of curricular goals and educational programs to be used by board for assessment prior to and during the budget process. I think that addressed some of Rebecca's questions, and I did actually download some of those, or, you know, the template that you were talking about from Falmouth, and it's a good starting point. And the fifth one is to oversee slash guide framework for communication of and progress toward these goals to the public. So I think it's an exciting opportunity for us to continue supporting the work that you all are already doing and to bring it, weave it into the budget process, and hopefully we'll find that it's beneficial to all of us. And then the last thing that I wanted to report out on is the Sports Done Right accreditation. My head's going up. Which will take place on May 5 from 9:00 to 12:00. Several members of the Sports Done Right Board will be coming down from Orano for a presentation and discussion with the Cape Sports Done Right Leadership Team. We will review our self-assessment, which includes our commendations and recommendations around the Sports Done Right core principles. The Sports Done Right Board members will then meet with Alan, the principals, and a School Board representative, in this case, which will be me. Following this discussion, there will be a session with middle school and high school coaches, and then a focus group session with middle school and high school student-athlete representatives. At the end of the visit, the Sports Done Right Board will debrief and identify our school community's strengths and weaknesses, concluding with a report outlining their preliminary findings. Embracing the Sports Done Right philosophy and becoming an accredited Sports Done Right school is a positive step in the right direction for our students and the athletic programs in our schools and our community. There is a great deal, I should say, that we have already, that we have been doing well, that we will continue to do well, but we are, of course, always mindful of how we can improve. And I would like to take just a minute or two to personally thank the following people for their hard work and participation on the leadership team. I don't think I've ever read these names out, but we've had members, a variety of people serving and helping us over the past, I want to say, year and a half to two years. I will start, well, actually, I should start with those people who have passed the baton, who are not here, but Sue Weatherby and Keith Weatherby. But of course, they pass the baton on to our new Athletic Director, Jeff Thorack, and our new Community Service Director, Janet Hoskin, who have done a fantastic job helping us move forward with this, and they certainly had a lot on their plates at the beginning of the year. Our parent reps were Cade Blackburn, Mark Hare, Kent Pierce, Colleen Tainter, and Chris Supple, and they were very involved and extremely helpful, and hopefully we'll have several of them there, or at least a couple of them there, when the Sports Done Right Board from Orano comes down. We've had several high school and middle school coaches helping out. Doug Worthley was very instrumental, certainly the first year, and very helpful. Scott Labby, Sarah Consella, Diane, is it Nicholson? Throw that crap. Student reps were Michael Taycash, Colleen Martin, Chris Burke, and Caroline Kelly. We had a town council rep, Jim Rowe, who was wonderful and came to most of our meetings and also had a lot of great things, too, a lot of great input. Community reps were Janet McLaughlin and Cindy Landergan, and we thank them, and former, and I just mentioned the former members earlier on. So I do want to sort of publicly recognize them for the time that they put into helping us through this accreditation process and getting us where we are now. So, thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Linda, I'm just going to keep going down.
Okay. Well, we do have an upcoming Human Resources meeting, May 14. We'll be discussing the board's self-evaluation at that point in time, if anybody wants to attend.
Thank you, Linda. Kathy, I know alternative energy at a minimum, right?
Yep. The Alternative Energy Committee, I'm a new member on there, the new School Board member met on March 25. I forwarded to the board this afternoon a copy of the minutes of the meeting, and it was a very interesting meeting. We received from Building Solutions a book at that meeting, and there is a book in Alan's office now for, oh, and behind Alan. It's not in his office, it's with him. In terms of a total discussion of a huge energy audit that they did on the schools in the town buildings, excuse me. There is a proposal, and the proposal from them is for a project of $2,663,792. And if you go through the book, if you have some time to look through it, it's very specific. The committee meets again on April 28. In fact, I have a conflict, so I'll have to figure out what that's going to be. But to discuss further, there were discussions at the committee level of how many, how much of these items might we do ourselves, and specifically with Ernie there and his group, and how many of these things that they might be able to do themselves. and how many of these things that they might be able to do themselves. There's a huge laundry list. They are going to be doing a wind turbine, reading, I guess, is what.
Tests.
Tests, thank you, to see what kind of wind we have for potential wind turbines down the road. There, it is, it's a huge laundry list. I mean, it talks about changing over the boilers in the schools, it talks about insulation. The thirties building, which we know has new windows in it, the area around the windows is not insulated, and so they did heat sensor tests, and there's some pictures of those in here that show, you know, here's a warm spot, here's a cold spot, and how they might address it. This particular group has some guarantees if we go with them in terms of how much energy we could save. So I'd encourage you all to take a look at the book. Like I said, that next meeting is April twenty-eighth, which is our next meeting of our workshop. The meeting's at six o'clock. The finance committee's meant to meet at six thirty, so maybe we can talk about how that might work, because I'd like not to miss it. This, because this was my first meeting, and I really sat on the edge of my chair the whole time, listening to what they said, because it was really good information. So this is a comprehensive audit of everything in the town, and it's unclear, you know, the committee, I guess, I'm not sure how far along they are in the process, in terms of when they will report out to, I assume, the town council on some kind of a recommendation on where we might proceed, and then from there, I'm sure there'll be lengthy discussions from many, many folks, maybe, you know, public input and so forth. So, pretty interesting stuff, and it, and it potentially could save us a lot of money, so.
And I would like to add that the, the two million-plus price tag, the, the hope is that this town could utilize some federal stimulus money in, from, in the energy area to help fund the cost of that, so.
They're not really there yet, but they're, they're talking, you know, they're starting to talk about, do we want to proceed in this way, and how are we going to do that? Are we going to use this company? Are we going to use it for all of it, part of it, and so forth? Because I think that there was some sense that maybe Ernie and his folks could be doing some of these things. But we have this, like I said, it's a great book, got it, if you could take a few minutes to take a look at it, it's really interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy, for that information. Rebecca, Mary, do you have anything to report on?
It looks now that the communication committee will meet on April twenty-eighth at two o'clock. We are talking about, we've been sidetracked a couple of times on meetings, and we are hoping to talk with various members of the school community about website redesign, so.
That was April twenty-eighth at two o'clock? Because that's not on our schedule, we can add that on.
Yes.
Ignores the teaching and learning.
Yeah, teaching and learning.
May seventh at eleven thirty. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other committee reports? I think that's everything. All right. Public comment on agenda items. I guess we will invite Dwight back up to the podium.
First of all, I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak with them tonight. I have been reluctant to do so. I'm not a resident of Cape Elizabeth, but I think most of the board members know that I have diligently attended most of the budget workshops. Not quite as many, perhaps, as Anne Smith Kiata, but almost as many. And at last night's town council, town council's public hearing, we heard a poem, we were threatened with a song, and we heard a great deal about an impending train wreck. I'll be much less ambitious. I simply have a title for my remarks, and the title of my remark is, "The Trainwreck Has Already Adapped the Station." As a teacher of history and government, I always tell my students that they must consider the context in which something is happening. People may have totally different views of an event, an issue, a war, or a budget crisis, depending on the context within which they view this event. For those who are fairly new to the budget cycle in Cape Elizabeth, this year may indeed appear to be a train wreck. Others may think that the train wreck is coming in two thousand ten and two thousand eleven. For me, for many teachers, and I think for many in this community who bought into the belief that Cape Elizabeth wants to be one of the best school systems in the state and the nation, the train wreck happened years ago. And we have simply been doing triage on the patient, the Cape Elizabeth school system, for the past few years. Last year, this board and superintendent did something that I thought was incredibly courageous and enlightened. You asked the administrators to develop a budget based on their estimate of what it would take to operate their programs in a manner that would truly meet the needs of all of our students. As I recall, this resulted in a budget that required increase of about thirteen percent in spending. Now unfortunately, this exercise was taken out of context, that word again, and you, the board, and the superintendent took a fair amount of criticism, if not abuse, for doing this. But that exercise provided us with an incredibly interesting and significant benchmark. We ended up with about a third of what our administrators identified as needed. Now, I'd like to provide just a little bit more context. I hope everyone can remember that it wasn't much more than two years ago that Cape was struggling with a question of whether or not it should merge with another school system. And you may recall that when we looked into this, or looked into the possible merger candidates, we discovered that they were spending from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars more than Cape Elizabeth, and our taxes would go up significantly. Now, if you take the average of those merger candidates and you multiply it by our seventeen hundred students, you'll find that Cape Elizabeth is missing out on about two million dollars worth of programs that could meet the needs of our students. That's also two million dollars' worth of tax relief that we've been enjoying for a number of years. When I look at the programs that I can't provide to my students, I see that as a train When I see a student in my classroom who is really having difficulty reading, I can't help but think about the program my sons enjoyed at another school district, where they were given the opportunity to experience immersion in a reading program placed outside the district. I don't believe that would happen at Cape Elizabeth. When I see Mr. Shed struggling to come up with a program that will identify the reading problems we have observed in the high school, but he has to develop that program at the expense of an entire computer lab, I see evidence of a train wreck. Now, for years, we have been hearing the refrain, "I just don't think we can afford that." You all know we've heard that. The only thing different about this refrain this year is that there is a "really" in the sentence, as in, "I really don't think we can afford that this year." But we're also hearing a new refrain this year, and it is, "There is no correlation between the money we spend on education and the performance of our schools." My response to this is, this works better as a prayer. We'd better pray that there is no correlation between spending and performance, because Cape's spending is below the average for all the schools in Maine. Maine's average school spends eighty-eight hundred dollars, we spend eighty-six hundred dollars. Now, I know that some people in this community get tired of us being compared to Falmouth and Yarmouth, so I will compare Cape to one of our other schools, where our old friend, Rick DeBusco, hangs out and is principal, and that is Old Orchard Beach, which spends ninety-three hundred dollars, about a million dollars more if you multiply it by our student population. Now, this is your community, and these are your schools, and these are your children. If you look at the budget process last year and the public hearing last night, I think it is very safe to say that this community is going through an identity crisis. It is having difficulty deciding what its expectations are for its schools and how much it wants to spend to sustain these expectations. Now, I am confident that the teachers and staff will continue to do their professional best however this community decides to answer these questions, but your staff cannot be expected to subsidize your schools while this debate continues. Which brings me to the question of if and how staff might be able to help out with this difficult budget year. Now, the first observation I want to make is that the superintendent, board members, teachers began discussing ways that staff could consider, I'm sorry, that staff could assist with this first gap way back in January. Without reopening negotiations, we identified sixty to seventy thousand dollars in savings, some of the contractual that could be made, in the very first budget go-round, this saved programs and staff. Now, we now have another hundred and forty-five thousand dollars gap to fill, and I know there are some in the community who have asked, "Why can't staff do that for us?" To explain this possible impact, I need an example, and one of the granddams of Cape Elizabeth High School has offered herself up as an example. And if you're watching, Elaine, I know Bill's going to love this. Let's look at context again, and I'm talking about, of course, Mrs. Brunel. Now, we've heard a great deal about the great salary increases some staff are receiving this year, but I want to put this in context, and I want to go back to the salary increases our friend, Mrs. Brunel, received in the two years before the current contract. And those raises amounted to three hundred dollars per year. That's it. Now, she was grateful, she tells me, but that, of course, did not come close to meeting any kind of inflation. Now, if staff were to make up this one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar gap, they would need to work two days for free, that's two furlough days, because I think, according to Mr. Hawkins, it costs us about seventy thousand dollars per day to pay our staff. Now, if Elaine makes around three hundred dollars a day, not an hour, but a day, Mrs. Brunel would be giving back the equivalent of all the salary increases she received for two years in the contract negotiated before the current contract. Now, the cost of the average taxpayer, I'm told, is close, to close this gap, is about twenty-seven dollars. Let's keep the math simple and move it up to thirty. Mrs. Brunel and her colleagues can close this gap by chipping in twenty times what it would cost the average taxpayer to close the gap. Now, would someone please explain to me how this makes sense with a straight face? To the best of my knowledge, we have no illegal aliens teaching at Cape. This means that your staff all have families in this country, they all pay their own property taxes in their own community, and there is no reason to think that they are not adequately feeling the pain of this recession. We all know Elaine is a, Elaine is a giving person, but I would hope that enough people in Cape can see the absurdity of the situation, that she won't be asked. Thank you for your patience and your consideration.
Thank you, Dwight. I don't see any other members of the public here to make any other comments.
Just take notes.
Any comments, questions from the board? Okay, do we have any agenda requests? Okay, announcements of upcoming meetings. I think these are on the website. We know that we need to add to additional communications and teaching and learning. Any other meetings that anyone's seemed to be? Okay, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Amanda. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Who is this?